Still thankful our King, you inhabit the praises of your people. Father, we declare heavens coming down to earth tonight. Oh, Jesus! Come on, here's our heart, Father, we ask.
We ask to pour your presence here on earth.
Say what? We are...
We are calling out.
Calling out for more. Let your glory fill this place, God, saturate and overtake. Nothing we want more. Here's our part, lifted hands! Reaching out for you, God. We're crying out. Gather here in your name. Giving worship. Give you what we owe you. Oh, mighty, by the Lord with me. Let us exalt his name together. You've been so good, Father. We're crying out for more. We hunger. Taste it, sing. We are... We thank you for how you move, but we're crying out for more. So glad. You've drawn it to. There is nothing we want more. Reaching out. Hungry people crying out. For the more of you. We want the more of God tonight. In the greatest name, giving worship. Giving praise. Open wide. More of you. Here's what we're asking, God. We want more. Give us more, Lord. We want more. Give us more. Hungry people say. Come on, believers. The cry of our hearts. In this season of revival. One more time, shout it out. Give us more, Lord. Give us more. Say. In the greatest name. The name where demons flee and mountains crumble. Yeah, we worship you, our King. We bless you. We fill this room speaking well of you, our Savior. We invite you in. Do what you want to do. Say what you want to say. Have your way, our God. Come on, shout, have your way. We make room for more. We make room for more. Sounds good, church. Let's all say. Bless the Lord, oh mighty wise. Bless the Lord, you heavenly hosts. Bless the Lord, all you His angels. And let all the earth be His dominion. We all say. Come on and praise His name. Come on and bless Him. Come on and bless Him. Come on and praise His name. It sounds real good tonight, let's say it again. Come on and praise His name. Come on and bless Him. Come on and praise His name. Here we go! See, bless the Lord, almighty one. See, bless the Lord. Bless the Lord, all you angels. And let all the earth be His dominion. And we all say. Come on and praise His name. Come on and bless Him. Come on and bless Him. Come on and bless Him. Come on and praise His name. Come on and bless Him. Come on and bless Him. He's been so good. He's been so good. Come on and bless Him. Come on and bless Him. For the love of Jesus. For the love of Jesus. For the love of Jesus. When I move my body, when I move my feet, when I open my mouth, then the darkness bleeds. When I move my body, when I move my feet, when I open my mouth, then the darkness bleeds. The darkness bleeds. When I move... The darkness bleeds. The darkness bleeds. My praise is a weapon. My praise is a weapon. My dance is a weapon. My dance is a weapon. And my shout is a weapon. 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 My shout. My shout. My shout. My shout. Come on, let's. Come on and bless. Come on and bless Him. Come on and bless. Here we go, let's. My shout is a weapon. My shout is a weapon. My shout is a weapon. My shout. My shout. My shout. My shout. I will bless the Lord. We give you praise, our King. Come on, let's shout together, here we go. Find you and neighbor. Do it again, here we go. We all say. Come on, come on and bless. Come on and praise His name. Come on and bless. Come on and bless Him. Hey. Come on and bless. Yeah! Come on, bless the name of the Lord. I will bless the Lord at all times. His praise will continually be in my mouth. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Let our mouths always sing your praise. Father, let us be a people that always sing your praise. That always tell of your goodness and your great works. We say how mighty you are, how wonderful you are. What a healer, what a deliverer, what a Savior you are. Let us always worship you with the wonder that you are at the forefront of our minds. Because you are a wonder. He's a wonder in my soul. He's a wonder in my soul. He's a wonder in my soul. Bless his name. He's a wonder in my soul. He's a wonder in my soul. He's a wonder in my soul. Bless his name. We bless your name, God. Oh, we bless you, Jesus. We testify of your greatness. Fill this room speaking of your kindness. You give life. You are love. You bring light to the darkness. You give hope. You restore every heart that is broken. Great are you, Lord. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour our praise. We pour our praise into your breath in our lungs. So we pour our praise to you, oh please. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. You give light. You are our love. Come on, let's brag on in church. Bring light to the darkness. You give hope. You restore. Every heart. Every heart that is broken. So we sing, great are you, Lord. Come on, if you know where your help comes from, say. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour it out. In our lungs. So we pour it out. Say. It's your breath in our lungs. We know where our help comes from. Pour it out. Pour it out. We bless you. To our audience of one. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will sing. What do you say, church? Great are you, Lord. We declare your goodness. I will bless the Lord. Great are you. We give you praise, our Father. Uh-huh. We testify. We testify. We shout your praise. We can't keep quiet when we thank you, your goodness and who you are. We declare your praise. We declare your goodness. We declare your kindness. We declare your mercy. Hallelujah! You're worthy. You're worthy. You're worthy. You're worthy. It's your breath. Pour out our praise. We give you what we owe you. We give you what we owe you. You're worthy. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you, our God. Worthy and wonderful. We bless you, our King. There is none like you. From everlasting to everlasting you are. Age to age you stand. Oh, ancient of days. We bless you, our King. Hallelujah! All the earth say. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will sing. We say. Great are you, Lord. All the earth. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will sing. We testify. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. All the earth will shout. We'll sing, great. Great are you, Lord. And all the earth will... Our hearts will cry. These two bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. It's your breath. In our lungs. So we pour it out. In our lungs. It's your breath. So we pour it out. Pour our praise upon us. Pour it out. Pour our praise upon us. We pour it out. We bless you, our King. We bless you, our... We pour it out. We pour it out, yeah. Jesus, God. And all the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will sing. Great are you, Lord. We all say. And all the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will sing. They'll sing, great are you, Lord. It's your breath. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. Pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you, oh... It's your breath. In our lungs. So we pour out our praise. Pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you, oh please. Come on, let's open up our mouths and worship. The presence of the Lord is in this room. Bless you, Jesus. Jesus, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Great and greatly to be praised. And we exalt thee. We exalt thee. We exalt thee. Oh, Lord. We exalt thee. We exalt thee. We exalt thee. Oh, Lord. You are worthy. Yes. You are worthy. You are worthy. Oh, Lord. You are worthy. You are worthy. You are worthy, oh Lord. Oh, Lord. For you are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. For you are great. You do miracles so, so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. Come on, you are great, Savior. For you are great. You do miracles. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. You are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. There's a breaking in my favor. There's a shifting in my direction. Oh. There's a breaking in my favor. All over the room, we say. There's a breaking. It's in my favor. It's in my favor. And I see it, there's a shifting. There's a shifting. And it's coming in my direction. My direction. There's a breaking. There's a breaking. In my favor. It's in my favor. And I pray. My direction I want you to lift your voice Prophecy over your stuff, say, "There's a breaking" There's a breaking Yes, there is, yes, there is In my favor Oh, hallelujah Hey And there's a shifting In my direction In my direction Oh There's a breaking There's a breaking In my favor In my favor There's a breaking There's a breaking In my favor In my favor I see it coming There's a breaking In my favor In my favor And I pray My, I pray Hallelujah Hallelujah Oh, the heavens are open The heavens are open Hallelujah Hallelujah Yeah Hallelujah
Lord, hallelujah Hallelujah, come on, clap those hands for the Lord, come on And I'll say yes Lord, yes To your will and to your way I'll say yes Lord, yes I will trust you and obey When your Spirit speaks to me In my whole heart, I'll agree And my answer will be yes, Lord I want you to sing it as a prayer to the Lord tonight, come on I'll say yes, Lord, yes To your will Yes, Lord, Jesus I'll say yes, Lord, yes I will trust you and obey When your Spirit speaks to me In my whole heart, I'll agree And my answer will be yes, Lord Yes, Lord Come on, everybody Yes, Lord Sing it as a prayer, sing it straight to him, come on From the bottom of my heart To the depths of my soul To the depths of my soul I'll say yes, Lord Completely yes, come on, tell the Lord tonight My soul says yes tonight, everybody My soul I love you I love you I love you, Lord, today Everybody, come on Because you cared for me In such a special way In such a special Yes, Lord, that's why I praise you That's why I praise I lift you up, come on And I magnify your name I magnify your name That's why my heart is filled with praise tonight, everybody My heart is filled with praise Come on, open your mouth and just begin to love him, come on, right there, come on, love him Come on, love him, love him, love him, love him, love him Come on, just love him right there Come on, love him right there Something incredible has broken into this room tonight And I want you to set yourself because you're not leaving the way you came
Hallelujah
Come on, I said, "You're not leaving the way you came"
Amen
I said, "You're not leaving the way you came" I want you to open your spirit, open your heart, so let's just bless the Lord tonight Sing it straight to the Lord And you know, when we sing it this time, let's just cover our heart and cover our mind And cover our soul And we sing it directly to the Lord on tonight My heart, my mind, and my soul belong to you, everybody, come on, let's lift it tonight, my heart My heart, my mind My soul belongs to you, Lord Jesus You paid the price for me, everybody Way back on Calvary Way back on Calvary That's why I Well, go ahead and praise him then I lift you up, Lord Jesus We came tonight to magnify your name tonight That's why my heart is filled with praise That's why my heart is filled with praise Now clap those hands like you have the devil's head between them Woo, hallelujah Look down your row and tell two or three people something good is happening for you right now Can y'all receive that? Amen, something good is happening For you right now Amen Give the Lord another mighty hand of praise Give Harvest Music Live a great big God bless you Thank y'all so much, amen There's an old song that says, "Something It got a hold of me" Y'all don't know this one Oh, yes, it did, I said, "Something It got a hold of me" I thought I was finished singing, my Lord, hey, come on I said, "I went to a meeting one night And my heart wasn't right" I said, "Something, something got a hold of me" Come on, clap those hands and give God praise Hallelujah How many of you glad something got a hold of you? Matter of fact, it wasn't a something, it was a someone Got in my hands, got in my feet, got in my heart How many of you know I'm talking about the Holy Ghost? The Holy Ghost got a hold of me How many glad you got him tonight? There's something about the Holy Ghost I cannot explain But I'm glad I got him Come on, clap your hands And give God some praise in here tonight My God, I'm glad I'm saved I said, "I'm glad I'm saved" I said, "I'm glad I'm saved" And I'm sanctified And I'm filled With the precious Holy Ghost Come on, clap those hands and take your seat, my God, we gotta move, take your seat Woo, hallelujah My God I'm glad I'm saved I know some of y'all can't shout till you get your house and your car But I'm glad that I'm saved I'm not going to hell And I don't have to live a life of hell Yeah All right, all right, all right, God bless your musicians Y'all better take your seats so I can try to preach tonight Yeah, 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 yeah I'm glad I'm saved And I'm not turning back I said, "I'm not turning back" I'm not going to hell from the church If I was going to hell, I'd go from the top of Peachtree Center I'd go from Beverly Hills But I'm going to heaven What I'm trying to tell you is, if I'm gonna be a devil, I'm gonna be a good devil But if I'm gonna be a Christian, I'm gonna be a real Christian I said, "I'm gonna be a real Christian" My God Y'all know what you feel right now? I said, "Do you know what you feel right now?" That's reinforcements I said, "That's reinforcements" I said, "That's reinforcements" When you start shouting over the goodness of Jesus Starting with your salvation My Lord, my Lord, my Lord I feel my help in here Yeah All right All right, y'all take your seat, I better not even go there Touch your neighbor, tell them, try to hold it just for a minute, tell them, "Hold it for a minute" I said, "Isn't that called quenching the spirit?" No, that's just called holding it for a minute Woo, hallelujah Yeah, shata man so ho ya Ena ba ho saka Ah, yeah, I heard you, Lord, I, okay, God, okay Hallelujah My God, tell somebody, if you knew the hell I've been through And if you come out looking as good as I look You'd have to give God praise There's some of us that came back tonight We came back tonight not because we had a choice, we had to be here I said, "We had to be here" Somebody had to drag themselves in But you're here I said, "But you're here" And your breakthrough is in the room Your miracle is in the room I'm gonna give you 30 seconds to put some weight on it You go ahead and praise him for what he's doing for you right now I am so glad tonight That I'm at World Harvest Church I said, "I'm so glad I'm at World Harvest Church" You know, now I feel kinda churchy, I feel like giving him praise And you know, I go to some churches sometimes That don't have half the membership and half the stuff that y'all have And they all stiff and stuck up But I'm glad to find a church That know that God has blessed you That know where the Lord brought you from And you still hand clapping, foot stoking, tongue talking, sanctified church Look at your neighbor, say, "Neighbor If you don't wanna know what I praise him for And why I'm acting like this I'm saved" And I'm glad I'm saved Ay yi yi Clap your hands and give the Lord another praise tonight You better take your seat, my God, let me give you Ay yi 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 Woo Jesus is alive and well I said, "Jesus is alive and well" The reason I know he's alive and well Is because I got him on the inside Miracles are happening in this room I said, "Miracles are happening in this room" Why don't you tell somebody? Grab somebody by the hand Go ahead, grab them by the hand And say, "Neighbor Just in case The prophet can't get to you tonight And give you personal prophecy Tell him, "Let me prophesy to you" Tell him, "This week Is gonna be historic in your life" You're about to do what you've never done You're about to go where you've never been You're about to own what you've never had Well, shout Those of you that are watching By worldwide web and streaming tonight You oughta praise God right where you are Because I'm telling you The praise tonight carries the weight of God's glory The praise tonight has breakthrough power And if you'll just go ahead and praise him A miracle's gonna hit right where you are Now, everybody shout
Brother Gerald Just came in I think you were in one of my meetings with him This is Billy and Diana They live in Florida They, they do, they did, this sound funny, they do birds They raise birds They'll sell one little tiny bird like that For $50,000 And they got hooked up and connected with our ministry And they've been supporting us For a very long time They, they bred Listen to this They bred a form of parakeet Like a midget parakeet That had never been before Say God's about to give me a creative idea that's never been before Now shout about it So So they He said He said, "I have had a ringing sound In the back of my head Since I was 10 years old" He's now 60 It has never stopped From the time he was 10 years old Tormenting him Ringing in the back of his head He sowed a $1,000 seed Last week, I believe it was Brian could tell me To 8818 Where new becomes now And now becomes forever He sowed that $1,000 seed And his heel Has not had ringing in his head He has complete peace This is a 50-year coming miracle This is a 50-year coming miracle!
Hell does not have a stopper that's big enough to stop what's breaking through in your life. I'm gonna make that declaration again. I said, "Hell does not have a stopper big enough to stop what's breaking into your life." What's breaking into your life is a miracle. What's breaking into your life is the supernatural. What's breaking into your life is favor. The force of favor is an incredible force. One day of favor, Dr. Mike Murdoch says, will save you a lifetime or is worth a lifetime of labor. You don't need everybody favoring you. Put that one finger up that you put up this morning. Say, "All I need is one person, one right person to favor me, and it changes everything." And can I tell you that that one right person is already in the atmosphere of your personal life? And they're getting ready to say, "Here I am." "What do you need?" That was about 40 people. Everybody shout, "40." That was for about 40 people. Somebody that has the power to cause an immediate change and turnaround in your life just moved into your life a little closer and is about to make themselves known in your life. And they gonna hand you what you need. They gonna use their influence and their resources on your behalf to bring your dream to pass. That's called favor. On the way to your seat, tell your neighbor, "Favor is fair." Don't you come telling me favor is not fair, all the hell I've been through. Favor is fair. When God favors you, it takes away the pain, takes away the hell in your life. Apostle Rod Parsley, I honor you, sir. Thank God for your life and your ministry. Thank God for the example of your family. I'm grateful for the man you are. That's a real man sitting over there. I said, "That's a real man sitting over there." And then he's a husband. Thank God for the example of a godly marriage. Y'all don't know when to shout. I'm just trying to. Thank God for a real father. Naturally speaking and spiritually. We have an example. And then thank God for the awesome man of God that you are. Come on. We honor you not only here at World Harvest Church, Columbus and Elkheart, but we honor you around the world, Pastor Parsley. You're honored. I watch the Facebook Lives and I watch the streaming. People from literally every place on the planet that can receive a video feed honors our apostle. I'm gonna let the musicians rest, and I'm gonna talk for just a few moments. Y'all did an incredible job. I mean, y'all just go for broke every service. Thank God for you guys. Amen. I really mean that. If you keep your eyes on me, give me a few moments to tell you what the Lord put in my heart. It's gonna help somebody tonight, not only here but everywhere. I wanna help you understand why the devil don't like you. And ultimately, what he's trying to do. Christendom. Let me just put my personal spin on the word "Christendom," Christ and them. Christendom is under attack. And we are engaged in some serious warfare against the devil and his forces. Don't underestimate Satan. He's been around for a long time. And within your own processes, which is your thinking, which is your being, which is your doing, within your own faculties, you cannot and I cannot ever outwit the devil. God knew that. That's why He sent Jesus. Jesus gave His life. Was resurrected on the third day. Went back to heaven, heaven's Western Union, same-day delivery, opened up. Brought us back the Holy Spirit, the Holy Ghost. And because we have become empowered by the Holy Ghost, our mind is not our mind. We have then the mind of Christ. The same Spirit that quickened Jesus and raised Him from the dead lives now on the inside of us. So our thoughts have and are becoming His thoughts. Our minds are becoming and have become the mind of Christ. Just let this mind be in you. It's the mind of Christ. We need the mind of Christ, must have it because of our own. We're already defeated. Bible declared in John 10:10, "The thief comes to steal, to kill, and destroy." Jesus said, "That's alright, let him come." Because while He's thinking about coming, "the thief cometh," which means futuristic, "he cometh," He's thinking about coming. Jesus said presently, "I am come." In other words, "I'm already with you." And while He's preparing an attack, while He's preparing whatever He's going to do, however scrupulous means, or whatever scrupulous means He may use to try to come against us, Jesus said, "It's alright, don't fret because I've already come." And while He's thinking about coming to steal, to kill, and destroy, I've already come and given you life. Oh, I feel another praise coming. And I've given you that life more abundantly. Oh, life to the field. Life till it just overflows. Life that's just too much. I want you to put your hand on one neighbor on one side and just tell them, "Welcome to the abundant life." Put your hand on the other neighbor, and I want you to tell them, "Welcome to life overflowing." Now, let me be an attorney or a lawyer, an advocate for Satan for just one moment. Stay with me now. You know, you really can't blame the devil for waging war against Christ and them. Because He lost His position, was kicked out of heaven into the earth realm. Though He has His dominion in the second heaven, He frequents the earth, He and His demons. And they come here to wage war against us because now we have something that He used to have that He will never be able to get back. And He says, "Well, I'll get back at God for kicking me out. The only way I would be able to get back at Him is I gotta come after His children." And for thousands of years, Satan has been out to get God's children. All that devil is a sore loser. Jesus defeated him over 2,000 years ago. Bible says, "Be sober and vigilant, because your adversary, the devil, as a roaring lion; walketh to and fro, seeking whom he may devour." Didn't say he was a lion. Said, "He walks as a lion." The devil's master, uh, most masterful weapon is the spirit of intimidation. He's not really a lion. He's just a big old kitty cat that the lion of the tribe of Judah beat over 2,000 years ago. I mean, Jesus beat him so bad, just knocked his teeth out. Just pulled his claws out. Really Satan is like the cowardly lion from The Wizard of Oz. Put him up. Fight with one hand behind my back. He looks like a roaring lion. He acts like a roaring lion. But his growl, because Jesus hit him in the throat, is nothing more than a huge meow. He hates God. He hates Jesus. He hates the Holy Spirit. And he hates you and I. I was at the hotel, and the Lord spoke to me between service, and I can't preach this, but let me throw a piece of it out there to you. Because the Lord spoke to me, and He said, "Satan only has one weapon left, or one tactic left, one trick left." I said, "What's that?" He said, "Flip over Revelations 12 and just read it." And I read Revelations 12, and when I saw it, man, I start shouting at the hotel because I saw it. I saw it. In Revelations 12, there was a woman clothed with the sun, was talking about the church. And this woman was pregnant and was getting ready to give birth. And when she looked around in the room, in the delivery room, in there was, uh, was her doctor, was the nurses, but she looked in there and saw also the devil. Now, what's the devil doing in the delivery room? The Bible said, "He was there to destroy or devour her child as soon as she gave birth." And Holy Spirit said to me, "That's just where the devil is." What the devil has done, he's attacked you, and you overcame it. He tried to touch some of your stuff, and you didn't get discouraged because of what God allowed. Praise God, you kept on praising God until God gave you back everything you lost. So He couldn't get you with the stuff. But what Satan is trying to do now, the next thing you give birth to, his job was to destroy that to try to set you back. And I kept on reading. And the Bible says, when I got down to the 12th verse, it says, "Rejoice ye heavens, and all that dwell therein, but woe unto the inhabitants of the earth and of the sea; for the devil has come down unto you, having great wrath; for he knows he has but a short time." I said, "Okay, God, how is that relative to the service? And to where we are?" And the Lord says, "Simple, son." He says, "I've sent My glory to let you know that His time is up." He couldn't get you through your stuff. He couldn't get you through your children. He couldn't get you by touching your health. And I heard the Lord say, "Because you withstood the test, and you kept on trusting Me, and you kept on believing Me, and you kept on praising Me," He said, "The devil's time is..." Satan is not playing about stealing, killing, and destroying people and their lives, ultimately their soul. Don't play with the devil, and let me warn you. And don't get your stuff that you're getting ready to get and start tripping. He cannot stop you from giving birth. He's already tried it. Matter of fact, if you think about it, He's tried to get you to abort what God put in you. You've carried it now, and it's full term. I look at some of you in the spirit, and some of you got twins and triplets. Don't give birth to that house and to that car and to that business in multiple locations. And then start thinking that you're more than you are. I have to warn you tonight because everything that God said He was going to do in your life, it can manifest by this time tomorrow. I mean, come on, saints, what do you think all this glory is about? What do you think this spirit of revival is about? God is just aligning you and aligning Me so that we can receive everything that He promised us. But He does not want us to get His stuff and then leave Him. Well, I can see Satan right now. Satan said, "I couldn't get him. I couldn't get him when they had nothing. I couldn't get him. I couldn't get him. They trusted God all the way. They kept praying. They kept praising. They kept giving. I couldn't stop him." He said, "But I'll get him on the other side. I'll cause them, I'll let them get blessed. And then what I'll do is make them fall more in love with the creation, the stuff, more than the Creator." I told you this morning, I'm walking around, money in my pocket. God had made me debt-free. And I'm walking around, and God said to me, "You're not there yet, son." And I said, "God, I am there. I am there." He said, "You're not there yet." I said, "God, what do you mean I'm not there?" He said, "Son, you're not there until you're able to be to somebody else everything that I am to you." I had to sit down and ask myself, "What and who is God to me?" And I was able to answer it because He was money in my pocket. I was experiencing that. He was a roof over my head, car to drive, clothes on my back. He was help to my bones. Come on, are y'all with me? He said, "You'll know you've made it when you can put somebody in a house." Y'all getting quiet on me now. "When you can put somebody in a car, when you can pay off somebody else's debt." He said, "Then walk around like you've made it." I said, "Okay." You cannot allow pride to come in when you get the blessing. Have you ever seen folk, before they got blessed, they shake your hand like this? God bless you. But just as soon as, soon as they get blessed, they see you coming, and they say, "Praise the Lord." What is that? It's called pride. If I was good enough for you to hug when you was hustling, God, then now that you're blessed, you ought to squeeze life into me. Uh, I'm gonna do something that they taught us against in seminary. They said, "When you, when you get up to preach, you give your, you read your scripture, and then, and then you give your, you give your subject, and you stick to it." I'm a quarter of the way finished, and I'm just now gonna give you the subject. Cause all I wanna talk about tonight is build on this. Build on this. What Satan is trying to do now, he's trying to get us away and off of the old path. He's digging at our foundation, trying to get us to deny the faith. And he is doing it through lukewarm, watered-down, has-beens, I think Pastor called them Motown has-beens. He's trying to do that through people that we know in Christendom that have lost their sight. Lord, help me tonight. Put this scripture up, put up Matthew 16 and verse 13. And let me try to get out of here. Matthew 16 and 13, if y'all have that in your Bibles, go there very quickly. Matthew 16, 13. Y'all got it? Huh? Ain't nobody here but me and you, you got it? Look at what it says. "When Jesus came to the coast of Cessafila, he asked his disciples, saying, 'Whom do men say that I, the Son of Man, am?'" Lord, have mercy. Next verse. Verse 14. "And they said," you know, y'all always gotta be careful of they. "And they said," if anybody ever bring you some gossip, and they say, "they said," then know that the person is als, that's telling you, they were also included in they. Cause if they really had your best interest at heart, they would shut them down. And half of the foolishness, they wouldn't bring it back to you. Ah, "And they said," some Jesus say that you are John the Baptist, some Elias, some others say you're Jeremiah's. Next verse. "Or one of the prophets." Next verse. "He said unto them, 'But whom do you say that I am?'" Oh, it's gonna get good in here tonight. Go ahead, read, I mean, go to the next verse. "And Simon answered and said, Thou art the Christ." Christ is not his last name. Christ depicts who he is, who Jesus really is. Christ means the Anointed One and his anointing. It also means, when you see the word Christ, it also means yoke-breaking, yoke-destroying, burden-removing, power that comes from God. Somebody say, "You said yoke-breaking, and then you said yoke-destroying." Yeah, cause every yoke in your life don't need to be destroyed. Some yolks need to be broken, while others need to be destroyed. If the devil acting up in your spouse, you don't need that destroyed. You need that broken and sent back to where it come from. Oh, you hear me in here? Simon answered and said, "Thou art the Christ, the Son of the Living God." Look at the next verse. "And Jesus answered and said to him, Blessed art thou, Simon Barjona, for flesh and blood did reveal to you who I am." Next verse. "And I also say, I say also unto you, that thou art Peter. And upon the revelation of you knowing who I am, I'm gonna build my church. And the very gates of hell shall not prevail against my church." Now, the only churches in this aisle that you see the gates of hell prevailing against are the churches that don't have the revelation that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of the Living God. Because if you have yoke-breaking, yoke-destroying, burden-removing power that comes from God in your church, there's no way hell can overtake it. If you have yoke-breaking, yoke-destroying, burden-removing power that come from God in your home, there's no way the devil can destroy it. If you have yoke-breaking, yoke-destroying, burden-removing power in your God-given business, there's no way you can do anything but go up. Problem is, we've allowed people that once knew, that have lost their focus, I'm going somewhere, I gotta lay the foundation for it. They've lost their focus because they have allowed the enemy to come into their lives so much so that they don't even have the revelation anymore of Christ. I even scratch my head and wonder even if many of them were ever saved anyway. Somebody said, "There you go judging." Absolutely, I'm called the judge, and you are too. Somebody say, "Well, don't Matthew 71 say, 'Judge not that you be not judged'?" It does, it's talking about someone's eternity. It's not talking about, "Don't call a fig tree a fig tree." We're dealing with a generation now that will tell us that they are an apple tree, and we look at them and know we're seeing pomegranates. And then we call them a liar, and the first thing they say is, "You're judging." The first thing I reply is, "You are right." Because the tree is known by the fruit it bear. Y'all better come get me, cause I feel something stirring. I'm gonna give y'all some, I'm gonna give you some ammunition tonight to fight with, because what the devil is trying to destroy our foundation. And if you don't understand that the saints shall judge the world, if you don't understand that you are called to judge, then you're always gonna pine away from the world. And many of that come in the church. I think one time obviously I told you about, you know, started giving this revelation on judging. And I told you, you know, if you out here driving, you know, like 70 miles per hour out here on this street, and that speed limit out there is 45, the police pull you over and write you a ticket, you got to go to court on the 15th. You don't go down to the courthouse, I've never seen nobody do it. I've never seen nobody go in front of the judge and tell the judge, "You can't judge me." He tells you $250 and the cost of court, and you done paid your attorney. Y'all talk to me. I know you paid your attorney, cause he keep putting it off till you ca, till you paying. You take your happy hips right on down to Kirkuk Court, and you pay your costs and your fine. You have never told the judge, "You can't judge me." Well, if that's a natural judge, then how much more should those of us that are representatives of Christ, especially leaders, how much more should we be judging? The problem that we have so much going on with Christ in them, Christendom, is because we don't have enough leaders with enough backbone to call it like the Bible shows it to them. I'm sure it to you. If you don't have a revelation of who Jesus is, you're not gonna do well. And the revelation of who Jesus is comes from only one place. Flesh and blood can't reveal Jesus to you. Only God can reveal to you who his son is. I want you to follow me through here because the plot thickens. There will never be any reception where there's not proper perception. You can't receive from God and Jesus and Holy Spirit if you don't have proper perception of who they are. And equally of what they wanna do in your life. You must have a revelation of who God is, because he cannot bless you beyond your current revelation of who he is. God is still in the healing business, still in the delivering business, still in the blessing business. But he can't save, heal, and deliver if you don't believe it. That's why you can come to services like we've had here over the last four weeks. You come to services like this, and people all around you get blessed. And then you leave frustrated, because nothing really happening for you. And the reason nothing really happening for you is because you, you come to where the glory is, you come to where the miracle is flowing, but your revelation is cut off. While everybody's praising, you're sitting with your arms folded. While other people are sacrificing praise. You're talking about how tired you are. And they get the miracle, and you end up frustrated. Only God can reveal to you who Jesus is. Flesh and blood cannot do that. Flesh and blood cannot reveal to you who your leader is. Some of you should have been healed a long time ago. Some of you should have been further blessed than you are, you should have been blessed a long time ago. If you wanna know what God's up to, learn to hear the vessel that he sent you, namely your leader. I mean, this man that God puts the time in every day, in the presence of God, just to get a word to us for an hour, hour and a half, possibly two hours on Sunday, we hear it, we shout over it, but have we really ingested it? If you wanna know what God's up to, hear the preacher. You're a pastor. Jeremiah 3:15, God said, "I give you pastors after my own heart," which means they stay in the presence of God, they get a word from God and an anointing from God for you. And he says their job is to feed you with knowledge and understanding. You need the knowledge and understanding, because God had put his dream inside of you. But if the dream, if the, but if the dream is not nurtured through the word of God, if you're, if the dream is not nurtured through faith, if the dream is not nurtured through prayer, through fasting, through giving, come on through a consecrated life. If you don't know what God's up to, listen to the preacher God sent you, namely your pastor. Your pastor will come out here and give you the word of God. Don't be trying to get a second opinion. Well, let me ask my girl, see what she think. Well, let me call so-and-so and see what they think. God's word don't need a second opinion. He either said it, or he didn't. I'm at a place in my life, not, over the last several years, this been my, my, my lot for years. I told God, "God, if they come in your name and say to me, 'You said it,' then I'ma hold you to it." I said, "So what you need to do is kill them before they get to me if you didn't send them." Because if they come and they give me the word, I'ma hold you to it. Because when you get ready to speak, Lord, you speak through our leadership. Man, 8818? Our new thing now? That's gonna last forever? I believe that. I said, "I believe it." God, you shouldn't have said it, and let me hear it. So what am I doing? I'm strengthening my stakes and lengthening my chords, and I'm not listening to no devil. I'm two days away from something so historic that I'ma have to learn how to live all over again. Can't you see it? Can't you see it happening in your whole life? I mean, come on saints, let's start playing church. I mean, if the man that God said that God said it, then when are you gonna believe it? See, there are certain seasons in your life, you have to disconnect yourself from people that don't see you as God sees you. You have to disconnect yourself and go all the way into the blessing by yourself. You gotta be like Joseph. You gotta be tired of the pit and the prison and messy folk that are even sometimes in your own blood. And you gotta go all the way in and then turn around and be a blessing to them. There's so much riding on 2018. There's so much that God wanna do for the body of Christ, but if we're not careful, we will allow the enemy to shake our foundation. You must have the revelation personally for yourself of who Jesus is. Course not, cause you got preachers out here running around, and, and some of these national artists who we are bringing to many of our churches, you know, ch- Christendom, Christ in them. And they got great gifts, great anointings, which come without repentance. Just because you can rock a house does not mean God is with you. Gifts and anointings come without repentance. God gives gifts as he will. God gives gifts as He will. And you got these preachers, I mean, some of these singers running around here, you know, saying crazy stuff. About a month ago, a young lady gets on, all of us know, gets on social media and she says that Mary was not impregnated by the Holy Ghost, that Joseph really impregnated her. That's the devil messing with our foundation. And he uses people that are gifted and anointed to do it. Watch this. That some of our lukewarm leaders with no discernment have led into our house. I ain't scared. I ain't scared. I ain't scared. I know where my help comes from. My help come from the Lord. I know where I'm at. I know I'm at World Harvest Church. I know I'm standing on an international platform. I already know that. I already counted up the costs before I got here that I would have to preach this word and to warn the body of Christ, Christ in them, that we gotta be careful. We gotta know those that labor among us. Let me show you this. Go to... Go to 2 Timothy, chapter number three. I'ma read quickly 13 verses. Matthew 16 and 13 through 19, that had to do with leaders having a revelation of who God is. I can't expect the church to do no better till leaders do better. I mean, I was watching, I was on social media yesterday. There's a pastor that if I called his name, everybody in here know. I'ma give him a chance before I call his name. You know, that's what prophets do. Prophets call the name. But I'm trying to give him place to repent because I have better thoughts of him than that. And he gets on social media and he says that all of our churches, which means he's a man of authority, he has pastors under him, and he says, "We gonna have the Kiki challenge in church tomorrow." Now, if you over 40, you probably don't know what I'm talking about. I mean, the guy's gifted. He's charismatic. He's anointed. Gifts and anointing come with our character. When are we gonna examine a man's character over his gift? Come on, church, you can have a gift and end up in hell with a gift. Let me just break down the word "anointing" to you so you'll get a good understanding. All the word "anointing" means is God's ability on your life to get a job done. That's all anointing is. God's ability on a life to get a job done. It has nothing to do with you being saved. It has nothing to do with your character. Before I go to 2 Timothy, go over to Ezekiel 22. Since I didn't put the preachers out there. Preacher said, "We gonna do the Kiki challenge in church tomorrow in all of our churches, sis, and we gonna have a competition." You know what he just did? He just opened his whole church up and his whole organization up to the devil. And the only reason I'm not calling his name is because I believe that he got sidetracked somewhere and I believe that God's gonna talk with him and deal with him and get him back on track. But I must warn the body of Christ. Y'all got Ezekiel? 22? Verse 26? Look at it. Let me show it to you. "Her priests," this is God talking, "have violated my law and have profaned my holy things and have put no difference between the holy and the profane. Neither have they shown difference between the unclean and the clean. They have hid their eyes from my Sabbaths, and I am profaned among them." Next verse. "Her princes in the midst of her," these are the pastors, "are like ravages ravaging..." "Her priests in the midst of her are like wolves ravaging the prey to shed blood and destroy mind, will, and emotions of my people, the souls, to get this honor, this honest gain." Next verse. I got one more. Look at this, because here's where it gets really scary. "Because her prophets have dabbed them with untemperate martyr, seeing vanity and divining lies unto them, saying thus saith the Lord, when the Lord hath not spoken." Next verse. "The people of the land have used oppression and exercised robbery and have vexed the paw and the needy. They have oppressed the stranger wrongfully." What I was trying to show you out of that is God says, "I'm gonna destroy these church folk because they have opened my house up to the secular, to the culture. They have put no difference between sacred and secular." You should have saw it coming with Yolanda Adams years ago when she had Bishop Secular, who told the church, "There's nothing wrong with being secular for two minutes." We have allowed people with gifts and anointings to come in and mess with God's most precious possession, His sheep. Put no difference between holy and unholy, clean and unclean. And even invited in lying prophets for dishonest gain. Are y'all hearing me in here? Just because a person is gifted and anointed does not mean that they're mature enough to stand on this platform. And we've got pastors around the globe that are so scared to preach truth. And the reason they scared to preach truth because they still got a little lust in them. And they scared to preach it because they feel if I preach it, then I'm gonna be uncovered. Or if I preach it, I'm gonna lose what I built. You gonna lose it anyway if you built it. Because unless the Lord builds the house, they that labor, labor in vain. We can't promote gifts and anointing over character and the integrity which only the Holy Spirit can give. Have we forgotten judgment? Because judgment is a part of it. Hebrews 9 and 27 says, "For it is once appointed..." It's gonna get real quiet right through here. "It's once appointed for man to die, and then after he dies, the judgment." You gonna have to give an account to God for every deed. You gonna have to give an account to God for having the Kiki challenge in church. You're gonna have to give an account to God for trying to tear up the foundation of our faith and trying to get us to believe that Jesus was conceived by Joseph and not Holy Spirit. And then we take up for him. You cannot take up for people that are the enemies of the cross. I said it, I won't take it back. You cannot take up for people that the devil is using to destroy the foundation of our faith. Because if you tell me that Jesus was not impregnated by the Holy Spirit, then there's nothing else about the faith that I can believe. Another preacher just said to me, knowing personally, just said to me, "I am tired of preaching this white gospel." Can I go there just for a minute? He said, "I am tired of preaching this white gospel." He said, "This is the slave master's gospel." "And we've been deceived all these years." I said, "Man, you done lost your job because you done lost your mind." I said, "If this was the white man's gospel, I'm still gonna hold on to it because it changed my life. There's some power in this gospel. I ain't going back over there and looking to go serve who my forefathers served." Y'all black folk didn't like that. I'm not going back to witchcraft and necromancy and soup sand and Santeria and... They just, they using the gospel to keep us in bondage. Man, this thing set me free. It made me sin free. It made me sickness free. It made me poverty free. All of us can identify because when we were serving the devil, he couldn't keep none of his promises. And so we left him. The reason he hates us and he is fatally attracted to us is because he knows how powerful we are. And if he can cut us off before we come into the full revelation, then he know he got generations following us. But we are so close to the fullness of Christ. Come on, somebody. I said, "We are so close." That's what a sanctified life will do for you. That's what living apart from sin and not trying to mix sin with the church. Come on, somebody. That's what happens when you make up your mind to sanctify yourself. Okay. Go over there, go now to 2 Timothy 3. Let me read this. I gotta warn you because some of you getting ready to have so much money, you gonna have to put it in multiple banks. And I don't want you to have all that money and lose your mind. I said, "Some of you getting ready to have so much money, you gonna have to put it in multiple banks." And I don't want you to get all God's stuff and then go crazy. So I gotta warn you to escape the culture. While some preachers are letting it in, we gotta run from it. I mean, come on, I don't mind the church having a good time and God don't mind this church having a good time. But my God, God is so creative that we don't have to get no song from Drake. We don't have to get no song from Beyonce. We don't have to... I mean, God is so creative, He gives us our own songs if we let Him. He give us our own dance. Don't need no Kiki dance. "Kiki, do you love me?" If she loved you, you wouldn't have to ask her. I don't have to ask my wife, "Do you love me?" Because she shows me every day. What I'ma look like and sound like walking around the house? I still got nine kids home. My wife's nickname is TT. What I'ma look like walking around? "TT, do you love me?" I know the girl love me. She still with me after 11 kids. You cannot mix sacred and secular. You cannot sing with Snoop Dogg. Bring me a camera. I need a camera. Where's the... You cannot sing Christians with Snoop Dogg who got high before the concert and after the concert, after he took the robe off. He went right back to smoking. So are you telling me that it's all right for the church now to get high on them tweeds? What you are telling your children is that it's all right to mix sacred and secular. We don't have to mix with the culture. Trying to be relevant. You are relevant because you stand against the culture. What makes you relevant? Oh my God, y'all better come get me. What makes you relevant is the Holy Ghost. Oh, I forgot, you don't have no Holy Ghost. You got Casper. These people ain't got no Holy Ghost because Holy Ghost will tell them, "Don't mix sacred and secular." They will feel something in their spirit just ain't right. And then when I see these Christians walking around, quote-unquote Christians, walking around with these secular people, they're like a deer in headlights, like they just, they just so in awe when the world should be following us in awe. We shouldn't be in awe, damn! This is why we can't have a move of God. We're begging God for a move of God. But the people that we invite to our conferences are demonic. I said it, I'm not gonna take it back. We want to see the authenticity of God's presence and the authenticity of God's power and see God move like we have never seen. I don't even know what to expect about God. But what I do know is that God can move in such a way that by this time next week, that what doctor said was incurable, it'll get out of your body. Here's the problem. Leaders need to be saved. 'Cause when you got a godly leader, he's gonna protect and she's gonna protect the flock. I'm so sick of hearing women talking about, you know, having these conferences, these diva conferences. I mean, I think I'll just throw up if I see another prophetic divas conference. The word diva means she-devil. So how you gonna be, how you gonna be God's daughter and a she-devil? Prophetic and diva don't even go together. I ain't getting no help, I thought I was gonna get more help than that. I said prophetic and diva don't even go together. In the Urban Dictionary, the word diva means she-devil. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that women shouldn't, listen, that women shouldn't look good, that women shouldn't, you know, have what they, what they want, you, you can have that. But when you get to the place that you say you don't need a man, you in trouble already? 'Cause I'm trying to figure out how you don't need what you were created for. That's the spirit of Lilith, L-I-L-I-T-H, Google it. Beyonce can't be your role model and you say... You got an identity problem. You having a midlife, mid-Christ life? Meltdown. Why would you wanna be like Beyonce? When she just blatantly tells you she's a devil worshiper? In her video, you see all the satanic, all the satanic symbolism, you see it all in her, she... Jay-Z tells you he's an apostle of the devil. Then you give your grandkids fifty dollars to go to their concert, you just sent them to a ritual. Those guys know what they're doing, they know it's just not a concert, it's a ritual, it's a church service. Well, I just want them to have a good time, bring them to church! You got a five-star children's church? Come on, y'all. I'm a diva and you walking around in your heels? Ain't nothing wrong with your heels, get the best, get the Christian Louboutin red bottoms, nothing wrong with the heels. It's the attitude. It's the spirit. Listen. Why you wanna be a diva when God calls you daughter? What's more than a daughter? Man, I can't wait to get home, because every time I come home, my daughters especially, they just are all over me, just jump up in my lap, they just love for their daddy to kiss them and tell them how bright they are and how beautiful they are and how great their future's gonna be. I prophesy to one of them at least every time I hug them, every time I touch them, I'm speaking into their future. And the reason that I'm doing that is because I don't want, I don't want buster. Some of y'all ain't got mister, you got buster. I can't let my daughters walk around thinking they're divas. They're daughters of God. They're daughters of the Most High. That's why I keep their mama up. Keep Teyl looking good. Y'all know that girl look good to have had eleven children. I keep her up because my daughters look at her and every one of them say, "My mom be just like you." "I wanna be just like you." That's their role model. When was the last time your child told you they wanna be like you? Well, I thought you were gonna talk about wealth tonight. If you get this, you won't need a prophet, the prophets are wealth. It will flow in and out of your house, it through your business, it will flow so generational if you get this. God said, "You got too many idols, I gotta bring those idols down." Where I tell y'all to go? 2 Timothy, let me close with this, 2 Timothy. No, I gotta close, you got to go home. 'Cause don't tell me not to close, 'cause I got something to say, but... But I respect you enough to let you go home. One thing I found out about the Word of God, it'll keep. Bring me back, praise God, hallelujah. Who do men say that I am? That's talking about, that's talking about leaders, he had called his inner circle together, that's leaders. Where we talked about, went over to Ezekiel, still talking about leaders. These leaders have put no difference between sacred and secular. But now I wanna show you the church. And it's right here in 2 Timothy. And we gotta be careful. Chapter 3, verse number 1. Y'all got it? This know also that in the... How many y'all know we not just in the last days, we in the last of the last days? In the last days, dangerous times will come. For men shall be lovers of... Watch this, you gonna see the church in this. They're, they're gonna be lovers of themselves, covetous, boasters. Look at what I got. It don't matter what you got if you ain't never gave none away. A man's life does not consist in the abundance of things he possess. It's not what I get that make me the happiest, trust me when I tell you this. Coming from poverty, in extreme circumstance of poverty, it's not when I receive something that makes me the happiest. It's when I find somebody that was just like me, that had a legitimate need, and I'm able to give to them and smash them out of that. Boasters, proud, blasphemous, disobedient to parents. Now, the only reason kids are disobedient to parents is because parents let them be disobedient. I couldn't be disobedient to my mama. You'd be picking your teeth up off the floor. My mama would hit you so fast, you cry about two minutes later, you just realize something swollen, you just start crying. I remember one of my sons, this is years ago, mouthing their mom. And she called me and told me about it. I called a flight home. I said, "Here's a good time to make an example out of somebody." I grabbed him when I got home and threw him up on the wall, boom! And I said to him, "I don't care about you dishonoring your mama, but you will not dishonor my wife." And I dropped him, boom, let him hit the floor. When he saw I wasn't gonna let him handle my wife any kind of way, we never had that problem out of him ever again. And guess what? None of the other kids have ever did it because I took one and made an example out of them. Sometimes you gotta go crazy on one, I'm not saying, I'm not saying to them, and I want you to hear me, I'm not saying to you, "Abuse your child," that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying you need to beat the hell out of them. The Bible said foolishness is bound in the heart of a child, but the rod of correction will drive it far from them. Lord, we got a cussing prophet. No, you don't have a cussing prophet. There's hell in them. And you can drive it out of them. I never got my oldest, my oldest daughter, my oldest daughter who's now in, in the Air Force, who's doing very well for herself. I, I remember my, my oldest daughter was lying to us. She's watching tonight from Massachusetts. I said, "Here's an opportunity right here to set the rest of them in order that are innocent." Man, I went upstairs and grabbed the TV and threw it out the second-story window. Just threw it out. Okay, pray for me, I got angry issues, praise God. No, I don't have no angry issues. Started spinning around in the floor like this, "You better not ever," oh, I was going off. She thought I lost my mind. She start crying. Daddy, I'm sorry, she ready to grab, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry." I'm a, I was acting, I'm a good actor, praise God, I'm a good actor. You know I was acting. But I had no problem with the rest of the kids either. Sometimes you gotta go off. I'm not talking about like y'all do against the devil, 'cause some of y'all, the devil mess in your home, and you talking about, "Mr. Devil, listen. Can you please leave?" The devil don't understand that. You got to put him out. There's a song the old church used to sing, "Don't let the devil ride." "'Cause if you let him ride, he gonna wanna drive." So don't let him ride. Are y'all hear me in here? Let's close this. Disobedient to parents, unthankful. Now, you done bought him a hundred and seventy-dollar pair of sneakers, and next week they telling you what else they want. You bought them what you could and they tell you, "I don't want that." Gather all their clothes and put them in your room. Lock the door when you go to work. Let them get up and try to figure out what they gonna wear. Let them go to school, take all the furniture out of their room. Rent a U-Haul, put it in storage. Let it stay in storage for about a month. Get your money from the store, for the storage use. Let them come home and have to sleep on their mattress or the floor. Unthankful. Look at that, unholy. Come on. Without natural affection. Without natural affection. Woman told me, "I don't need a man." I said, "Well, what you need?" Early forties, got a juris doctrine, getting ready to sit on the bench, getting ready to be a judge, and said, "Every man that I've dated is intimidated of me." I said, "That's your problem. You're dating beneath your pay grade." I said, "Your second problem is you got an identity problem." There's a reason you're dating where you're dating. You're a Neiman Marcus girl, why you putting yourself on display at the dollar store? Neiman Marcus men shop at Neiman Marcus, they not going to the dollar store, well, they go to get some Clorox if they need some Clorox. Or some Armor All. Come on. You don't put yourself on display where you don't want people to buy. She said, "I don't need a man." I said, "What you need?" I said, "Are you homosexual?" She said, "Of course not." I said, "Oh, you buy toys. Look how y'all licking." I said it, I ain't taking it back. You talking about you don't need a man, but you ain't bought something shaped like a man. I can't even find batteries for my TV remote. The sex toy industry is a multi-billion-dollar industry. Oh, y'all didn't like that, let me just bring you up to speed. Harvard University did a study, and they found out that when major Christian charismatic conventions and conferences come to town, the pornography rate in hotels go up ninety-six percent. That mean they down at the convention center speaking in tongue, but when they get back to the hotel, oh, they still speaking in tongue. Well, he hurt me. Please, look down your road and find somebody that has never been hurt. Please stop using that for an excuse. Well, she hurt me, everybody been hurt. But you get over it and you love again. I'm trying to get the hum out and get the hem in. Okay, I better close now, okay, I better close. Without natural affection, it's just nature for a man and a woman to be together. I said, "It's just nature for a man and a woman to be together." It is not natural for two men to be together. It is not natural for two women to be together. It's not natural for a woman to be with Mr. Ed. Without natural affection, you got women marrying women, that's demonic. Men marrying men, that's of the devil. Next, women gonna be marrying horses and men gonna be marrying plastic dolls. Looking at social media a few weeks ago and here this woman married a tree. She literally married a tree. That world system is something else. I said that world system is something else. Get over your hurt so you can go on and have a great life. Love again, it's okay. It's okay. You wouldn't have got in the first mess had you went through counseling. Don't let the devil break up your marriage because you've been married awhile and you don't tell each other you love each other no more. Don't think ever that you got it like that after awhile, that you don't need to do what you used to do. Don't take each other for granted. Cause she got to go to work. And the devil already setting something in motion. And you don't know who. I don't even let my wife go to the gas station. I, I have my folk, my team keep gas in her car if you don't keep none in mine. Keep getting, I don't want her stopping, cause Buster might be at the gas station. Talking about, "Excuse me, miss, let me pump that for you." No, she don't need you to pump it in store. Somebody talking about that prophet there, he is gone. No, I know what to do. Come on, now, come on, I'm, that, that's good for laughs. She goes to the gas station. Let me close, here it is. Without natural affection, truth breakers, false accusers, incontinent, fierce. Ah, despisers of those that are good. Here's where the church is, right there. You don't want, you want everybody to like you, so you don't say nothing about nothing. And anything that you tolerate is going to reign in your life. Oh, anything, thank you, Holy Spirit, anything that you entertain has the right to detain you. Did y'all hear that? If you entertain it, you give it legal authority to detain you. That's why some of y'all, it's hard for y'all to, to do this thing called praise and worship. It's hard for you to get involved because you done sung every secular song you could all week long. And then you come to church and you think you can just turn it on. No, it don't work like that. You gotta live worship. Praise leaders are just that. Praise leaders, they're not praise pumpers. We come to pump you up and prime you and try to make something happen. We came to worship. You can worship if you want. Y'all didn't like that? Okay, despiser of those that are good. Don't you know when you do good, everybody's not gonna like it? People will despise you for going to church. They will despise you for going to this church. Went, went to the store to get these clothes, cause I didn't have none. I got invited to stay. I brought one suit, one this morning, sweating it out. What was I supposed to do? Borrow Pastor Parsley's suit? Can you imagine me in Pastor Parsley's suit? So I go to the store and the lady said, and I, I was excited. So I'm telling her, I gotta get these clothes because, you know, we at church this morning. I'm trying to bait her to come to church. He'll turn around and invite her the next week to your conference. You saw her with Nicki Minaj in the video. And you turn right around and invite her the next week. Not here. Come on, somebody. They got a farmer gobliness! But denying the power. Now here we are praying for a power move. And can't have a power move, cause the one we invited to preach ain't got no power. They got charisma. Come on, somebody. Know how to woo the crowd? But ain't got no power. Here's what the Bible says. "From such turn away." Is that what your Bible says? Next verse, here it is, I'm closing with this. "For of this sort they would creep into houses." They creep in. The gift got them in. Cause they sound so good. They got a prophetic gift and they are accurate prophetically. Watch this. "But a gift with no character again makes you a sounding brass." A tickling symbol. Creep in the house, led captive silly women laden with sin, come on. Led away with divers lust, come on. Ever learning, but never able to come into the knowledge of the truth. Next verse, almost there. Go to the next verse, let me hurry up. Next verse. I like that night verse says, "They come in, but they not gonna proceed any further because their own folly they gonna get caught up in." Oh, if the thief is found, he gotta pay us back sevenfold. Listen, that thief have been caught tonight, cause we gonna watch everybody now. Look at, look at what the man that God said, "But thou hast fully known my doctrine and manner of life." Did y'all see that? Manner of life. He says, "You know my manner of life, how I walked up right in front of you." My purpose, my faith, my long suffering, my love, my patience. Watch this. "My persecutions, my afflictions which came unto me at Antioch and I con him and it listra." Look at what, what he says. "What persecutions I endured, but out of them all." Everybody shouted, "The Lord has delivered me." Now if cancer can't kill you, do you think I'm gonna sit up and let some lukewarm quote unquote Christian kill me? Here's why I wanna be like you when I grow up. Because for over forty years, no scandal. They don't know when to shout, y'all, y'all. Over forty years, integrous when it comes to finances, integrous with his family. And you think I'm gonna sit up and let somebody talk about my pastor, the devil is alive? Now he'll tell us, "Don't, you ain't gotta defend me, God will defend me." "Oh, yes, I do have to defend you. I have to defend your faith." Out of all of your afflictions, I've seen you go through them. And I've seen God deliver you out of your persecutions. Every one of them. And you think I'm gonna stand by and let somebody talk about my pastor? Oh, no, 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 no. Now I ain't gonna cuss them out. I ain't gonna fight them. But I'm gonna tell you, whether you my blood family or whether you a friend or associate, if you wanna remain a friend or an associate and want me to come to the family cuck out, then my pastor cannot be an object for your jokes. Not only cannot, but will not. The Lord delivered him out of them all. Now, in the close, I have to give God praise because after seeing what he's been through and still stood and still standing, now I have a tangible, fleshly, but anointed person that I can use as a reference if I ever go through anything. And I cannot have anything other than the result of victory because all of my excuses got taken away when I saw God bring you out. Tell your neighbor, you can't stay sick if you wanted to. Reach over there to him and say, "Just be healed." You can't stay broke if you want to. Cause you got an example. They can see, let's close this. 2 Timothy 4 says, "The time will come when they will not endure sound doctrine." Talking about the church. "They will heed to themselves teachers having itching." Heard the young lady? She said, she said, "Jesus wasn't impregnated by the Holy Ghost, he's impregnated by Joseph." She found a teacher that preaches that. And because she couldn't get no more money at the church, she turned on the church. Everybody needs money, no question about it. No question about it. But God is gonna test your heart to see if you love his stuff more than him. Not that he'll know so that you'll know. He already know you're crook. He already know you don't want him. He already know you in it just for what you can get out of it. And that's why you're miserable. Cause God is not trying to bless us so that we can say, "Look at what I have." He's trying to bless us. Ooh, God, he's trying to bless us and wants to bless us so that we can give it away. I see it coming, I see it coming. I see a cloud about to hit Columbus, Ohio and Elkheart. Because it's a promise cloud. I see it about to hit and when it hit, the only need you gonna have is what do I do with what I got? Y'all better come get me, cause I feel like prophesied all over again. Look at your neighbor and tell your neighbor, "The cloud is here." Say it again, say, "The cloud is here." God's getting ready to bless you so much so, because of the mandate that's on your life and on this house, he's getting ready to bless you so much so that we'll have all things in common. Nothing lacking, nothing missing, nothing broken. And we gonna be true blessings to everyone assigned to us. True blessings. Everybody say, "True blessings." I know you've been telling God how much you need him. And your need have been, have so consumed you that you can't even hear God telling you how much he needs you. He has no hands in this earth but ours, no feet but ours, no voice but ours. God needs us and he wants to, listen, he wants to bless us so much so that we properly represent the kingdom. That you have no needs but more need of him. As a man that is debt free by the Holy Ghost, by the supernatural, let me ask you this tonight. What are you gonna do when you don't have no needs? When all of your bills are paid, you don't owe nobody nothing but to love them? What are you gonna do then? I'm talking right now to about ten thousand people that God is getting ready to supernaturally blow your mind. The economy of your life is getting ready to so shift that you will never have to wait to a certain day to get something you want today. The spiritual climate of your life is getting ready to so shift that before pastor can come out and lay hands on anybody, you gonna have too much anointing and you gonna have to give it away. Everybody around you will be healed before the preaching start. Do you have a plan? Seriously. Do you have a plan for what's hitting now some of us, but that will hit as many of us that will believe and receive it by eight eighteen? Do you have a plan? The only reason that God sent me here, and I want you to hear me. I was supposed to be in Phoenix, Arizona, great ministry there. And the Lord shifted the whole thing so I could be here. God did it, I didn't do it. God did it, cause I was supposed to be here. The only reason God brought me here was to warn you. Don't get caught up in the culture when the glory hit. Pastor Parsley, just as sure as the nose is on my face and we're here tonight, some things are over forever and we never gonna have to go back. You, ooh, I feel the flow of that anointing. You literally gonna have to learn how to live all over again. Somebody said, "But prophet, I'm older now and I'm at an age." Stop using your age as an excuse. God knows how to get to you what he needs to get to you now. He don't even have to wait the Monday. It could be in your bank right now. God's gonna bless some of you so big, you not even gonna have to preach and witness verbally. When you show up, people that knew you and know you, the way you gonna show up, how you show up is gonna minister for you. You know, there is a blessing that God can put on your life that will preach your message for you. When I pull up in Bentley and Mercedes, I don't have to say nothing. People ask me, "Who are you? Can we help you?" But of course. "What can we do for you?" And you can't be timid. Wealthy people don't pay for as much stuff as you think they pay for. It's the way you pull up. Everybody say that, say, "It's the way I pull up." Now if you wanna make up your mind and stay in that old jalopy that's smoking at both ends and four different sized tires on it. If you wanna keep pulling up like that, God says, "Bless you, go ahead. I'll make sure that those are the circumstances of your life, that you can't even buy four new tires." But if you're ready for supernatural increase, then God says, "I'm more ready for you to have it than you're ready to receive it." I know how to get to you what I need to get to you, when I need to get it to you. If you can just trust me and believe me. I have people in positions, some for honoring, some that are for dishonor. I can turn a man's heart. I can turn a man's heart, turn a woman's heart where I will. The very king's heart is in my hand. And I turn it where I will. If I can turn the king's heart, don't you know I can turn servants' hearts? And cause so much favor on your life that I'll enter you into a season of accumulation. And you'll accumulate things of appreciating value. Things that won't drop in value, but that will forever increase because increase is my plan for your life. Oh, my children. I hear the Lord saying tonight, "Tell my children, I'm getting ready to blow their minds, but don't fall prey to the culture." Final statement, this is why when God bless you and has he blessed you, don't get out the blessed place. There was nothing wrong with the prodigal son getting his blessing from his father. If you read the text, the text says that the father not only gave the younger son, but he gave the older son his lot, he divided unto them. The protection and the grace was on the older son because he got his stuff and stayed in the house. Don't ever get so big that you think your anointing is too big for this house. I'm baffled and I scratch my head often, wondering, "How can people get anointed and get a little blessing and leave their church?" Are y'all hearing me? You get anointed, get a touch, pastor lay hands on you, and now you think that you can go do this? It ain't the time to leave just because you got a touch and a prophetic word. Don't disconnect yourself from your Father and from your mother. If they send you out, go out with the blessing. But don't just walk up on them, talking about, "I'm outta here." Are y'all hearing me in here? Because the protection comes from staying under the covering. And you can be outside the house but under the covering because you left the right way. I never left a man to God, and I've only had two. I've never left a man to God that didn't say to me, "Go and my blessings be with you." One of them told me, "It ain't your time, sit down somewhere with your happy self." I was mad, but I sat down. Because I thought I knew. Are y'all hearing me in here? Some folk receiving anointing, and they can't draw 10 people in the bathroom at the Sunoco. It's a warning. Go with the blessing or stay in the house. You are so close to a life-changing event that the devil would do everything he can to try to distract you. You gotta learn to shut every voice down till you get everything God promised you. Shut every voice, every other voice down. Don't start looking at other churches, other people, don't start doing that. Don't look at your family, don't look at nothing but what you know God is talking to you about, and stay centered. Because if you can do that, that's where the blessing lies. That's where the blessing is. There's such an anointing here, I'm there, I'm there. Here we go. Listen to me very carefully, every hour, don't miss it. I want every person in here tonight that can get your hands on $100, I want you to get it. And I want you to give it. Now get ready to put up on the screen for those of you that need the ties. If you wanna sow your seed, if you wanna write a check, you can make the check pay by the WHC. You can text dollar sign and the amount to WHC, or text the dollar sign, the amount in WHC245777. Or you could click the banner or download the app at Rod Parsley. Or while you're on the, while you're online, right there. You could click on the banner or download the Rod Parsley app. And it's convenient. Saints, listen to me, I'm there, I'm done. I'm done. The Lord told me to prophesy in this house. Now, I'll be raising the standard, I can't wait to raise the standard. I don't know what God is doing, I'm scared to say I'm going home, I don't know what to say. But God told me to prophesy over this house that if you will walk with him, and numbers of you, if you will continue to walk with him right on up to the end of this year, you gonna finish this year in the black and not in the red. Oh, just relax. God knows how to get to you whatever he need to get to you. Some of y'all worried about monies, please stop worrying about money. You wanna know when God blessed me, can I give you a secret? God blessed me after asking me the question, "Son, what do you think's more valuable to me? Those souls that I gave you that you have to get back to me with talking about my children or money?" I said, "God, of course, a soul, one soul, one of my children's soul is more valuable to you than any amount of money you could ever give me." He said, "Son, if I can trust you with a soul, then money is but a drop in the bucket." Because you gotta get that soul back to me. Man, that changed my whole thinking about money. Let me tell you, I don't even pray about money no more. I used to pray, I don't even pray about money because I have this revelation that I don't have a money problem ever. I have a wisdom problem. And if I can get wisdom, then money will show up. Brother Chad, America, Google it, Google it tonight, it'll bless you. America produces 1,700 millionaires every day. A day. It's on Google, Google it. I Googled, "How many millionaires are in America?" Because I want to know. And Google said to me, I should've asked his girlfriend Siri. Google said to me, "1,700 a day." Why you still broke? America, you believe the media you want to, America don't have a money problem. The more they talk about money problems, the more buildings I see going up. You getting all these taxes from me and you talking about you broke? It's a lie. Come on, y'all, America's not broke. Not producing 1,700 millionaires a day. Money is not the problem, just relax about it. Money is not the problem. You need God to stir your creativity. That's what your offerings do. Stirring your creativity, making you more innovative, giving you more of his creative spirit. Pastor said it early on, God's getting ready to allow you to create some stuff. And what you create is gonna solve a problem. Money is simply a reward for solving a problem. Lawyers get paid because they solve legal problems. Doctors get paid because they solve medical problems. Are you hearing me? Pastors get paid because they solve all problems. Y'all didn't like that, y'all didn't like that. Look around you. What problems keep presenting themselves? There's a reason people keep telling you their problems. They're not trying to dump their garbage on you. They literally see something in your life. Here's your problem. You giving them answers without charging them. I mean, God, dog, come on, listen. If I'm good enough to solve your problems, listen, I'm not gonna give you no more free answers, you gonna take me to lunch. And I'm gonna order what I want and eat it while I listen to your problem. There are problems on some of your jobs, Holy Spirit just unshined me. God will give you the solution, but don't give it away free. Don't just tell your supervisor, your manager, "I know how to fix that." You can't do that every time. Tell them, "I wanna talk to your boss." "I need to talk to the owner." And then make them pay you for solving the problem. Money is simply a reward for solving a problem. The bigger the problem, the bigger the paycheck. Children of light, listen to me. The light of God draws everything, including problems. Stop giving away answers free. I got associates now that used to be my friends because I will not tolerate anybody prostituting my gift and my anointing. I know what I'm worth. I said, "I know what I'm worth." I can't put a price tag on the anointing because the anointing and the gift in my life, coupled with my character and integrity, is priceless, you can't pay me for that. But I know what I'm worth. I know what my time is worth. Come on, somebody. And time, once I spend it, I can't get it back. Come on, y'all. So I lost friends that have become associates because they can't see my value. And I don't argue with them. Because while they can't see it, they see me riding around in private aircrafts. They see me living a kingdom life, no sin, no sickness, no poverty, and no drama. I have a drama-free zone. And some of them don't like it, sir. But it's too late, mama. It's too late. I'm so far gone in God that I refuse to let people determine my income or my outcome. I'm done now, I'm ready to pray. Say it with me, say, "I will never, ever, 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 let anyone determine my income or my outcome." What are you worth? Go home and write it down. Tell God you wanna make high six figures, even seven, eight figures this year. Supernatural, he already know where it's at, he know how to get it to you. You may get a phone call, legitimate phone call from Dubai. You may be the one to buy Pastor an aircraft. Because getting back out on the evangelistic field, that thing has been really stirring in my heart. Getting back on the evangelistic field, you need your own aircraft. It's a must. I listened to you preach, Pastor Parsley, over the last service y'all were at. Where was that? Tennessee. And I looked at my wife, I said, "Honey, he's back." That's the Rod Parsley that the devil is scared of. And we can't let him overcome cancer and then be worn out with the cares of bills and travel. Come on, somebody. If we've ever stood with Rod Parsley, if we've ever stood with Breakthrough, if we've ever stood with World Harvest Church, we gotta do it now because of this mandate. I wonder what will God give you for helping him win a soul? Father, I thank you tonight for your people. Thank you for what you've done all day. I thank you, God, for this man of God, sensitive in the Holy Ghost to call this service tonight. God, you just wanna warn us that the blessing is so on us that it cannot be stopped but not to get caught up in the culture. You called us to stand out and be different. You called us with an understanding, we understand that we can't be friends with everybody. We understand that everybody's not gonna speak well of us. We understand, God, this mandate that's on our life. So Father, as we accept it even the more tonight, I pray that a wave, a blanket of your anointing would be so strong upon us that Satan will never have a foothold in our life. I thank you that souls will be saved by the multiplied billions. You gonna save like never before. You gonna use World Harvest Church. You gonna so bless us, God, that before needs, some of them even come to the public, we'll be able to take care of them. I give you praise, and I ask you for partners, God, for Pastor Parsley. I ask you for partners, people that have the wherewithal to sow into his life and ministry uncommon gifts. I thank you now. I thank you. Lord, there's a need right now. Let it happen, Father, right now. Give us a sign that all of these things have been begun and that they're in motion, that the momentum, God, is so that 2018 is really the year that changes everything. I thank you for this. I honor you for this. Never let a person on the side of my force be without. Raise everyone up. Bring them to the place that nothing is lacking, nothing is missing, and nothing is broken. I give you praise for that tonight, precious Jesus. There's such a cloud of glory. For finance and wealth. It's just, it's just incredible. I sense it because that's my, that's my area. Sense it in here. I thank you, God, for destroying what have tried to destroy us. I thank you for it tonight. For as many as are watching tonight, God, around the world. Even as they sow tonight, the $100 seed. Never let them be without, I pray. Or there's somebody who feel like they're all alone, that they're by themselves, that the weight of life. So heavy upon their shoulders. But tonight, you gonna give them a miracle. As they follow this simple principle in giving. You said, "Given it shall be given unto us." Good measures pressed down, shaken together, running over. You'll cause men to give unto our bosom. Thank you for this tonight. I hold you to your promise. So in Jesus' name. In Jesus' mighty name, my God. I want everyone to get that seed in your hand now. Everyone get that seed in your hand. Will y'all take just a few moments this, like tomorrow? To start tonight, if you can do it tonight, good. But by tomorrow, let's get in a, let's get an agreement in our own lives, personal lives. But let's do it corporately. Listen. And let's just put this anointing to the test. Let's ask God to do something for us that we can't do for ourselves. And watch His handiwork in your life. Come on, saints, this ain't no game. This ain't no trick. This ain't no gimmick. This is the word of God and it works for people that will work it. All I know is that I went to bed one night. I'm like the blind man. I went to bed one night broke and got up the next day and money was everywhere. Blind man said, they asked him, "How you get here?" He said, "I don't know." He said, "All I know is I was blind. But now I see." You are so much greater than what the devil has tried to tell you. And you are so much greater than even what we could explain to you. You are the sons of God and it does not yet appear what you shall be. Are you hearing me? Promised you I'd give you that revelation and of that, of the blind man, and this is not the same blind man I was just talking about. It's the blind man that Jesus put the clay on his eyes. And said, "What you see?" He said, "I see men. And they look like trees walking." That's Matthew chapter eight. Y'all remember that? He said, "They look like trees walking." Jesus prayed again. Said, "Wait a minute, let me pray again." And he said, "How do you see men now?" He said, "Oh, now I see men looking like men." I asked God, "Why did you have to pray twice? Why did Jesus have to pray twice?" And here's what God told me. He said, "Jesus had to pray twice because the first time He healed him too good." "You healed him too good?" He said, "Yeah." He said. "When I put the clay on his eyes and put my hands on it. He began to see men like I see men." God sees us as trees walking. He said it right in the Word. He said, "You'd be like a tree. Planted by the rivers of water." Do y'all remember that? And then he said this, "I wanna give it to you." That's Isaiah 61. And then in Psalms 1. 1 through 3. You know, blessed is the man that's walking not in the counsel of the ungodly. He said, "That man would be like a tree." See, we got reference that God sees men bigger than we see ourselves. Look at your neighbor and tell him, "I'm a tree walking." Has a person I read in one, in one translation, it said oak trees. Jeremiah 17 and 7 and 8. God says, "Men are trees." He said, "I had to heal him, pray for him again because I want to bring him back down to the reality of where he lives." And now I see men and they look like men. I wanna live by the first revelation. Tell your neighbor, "I'm bigger than your thing." Tell them, "My life is bigger than your thing." Well, we got all this revelation. What you gonna do with it? I'd walk out of here tonight with my head up. My chest out, knowing that my blessing was on me and that I'm gonna have more than I ever had. Watch this. And that in the next couple days, as the anointing just increases and is released. The more revelation comes and is released. I'd walk around here like I already got it. And wouldn't let nobody tell me that I don't. Because you get it first in the course of His holiness. You get it first in the spirit. And if you can get it in the spirit, it'll happen naturally. Standing all over the house. Now, Father, I've done all that you told me to do. I even did some stuff, Father, that I wanted to do. But I thank you tonight for my church family. This is a church that you've joined me to already by the Spirit. And you will give me the opportunity to come when they open the doors of the church. Bring my family. And we'll officially join. I thank you for that. I thank you for Pastor Parsley. Thank you for this incredible staff that stands with them. Thank you for this membership. Thank you again for partnership. Father, nothing lacking, nothing missing, nothing broken is your promise and plan. And Father, I thank you tonight. That the anointing of 8818. It will change lives around the world. We honor you for this. And as you continue to prepare your manservant and the dream team, and this team of believers for that great night of release. I thank you, God. That we all will never be the same. In Jesus' matchless name, we pray. Let everybody say amen. Saints, I'm telling you. It's on you. The manifestation is happening. Don't get the stuff and trip. Stay on this foundation. It's a firm and sure foundation. It's the foundation of our faith and the foundation of our fathers. Stay on it, amen? I love you, World Harvest Church, and I'll see you again real soon. God bless you.